I'd like to call this meeting of the Princeton City Council to order. Clear call rule.
Mayor Mabry.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Gomez, McCall.
Here.
McCransky.
Here.
Would you please stand to witness my allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, and in the middle of liberty and justice for all.
We're going to go to a public comment period. We have a public comment period at the beginning of the meeting as well as at the end. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing none, we'll move on. We'll go now to the minutes from the regular council meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clear call rule.
Uh, Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye. And now we'll go to invoices.
For this period in the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have invoices totaling fifty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-nine cents. In the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling one-hundred-ninety-thousand, three hundred and four dollars and six cents. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, we have invoices totaling three-hundred-seventy-six-thousand, eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. And in the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, three dollars and eighty-one cents. For a grand total of seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-fifty-two dollars and thirteen cents. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clear call rule.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is, uh, ordinance, second reading, this is the second reading of ordinance O dash twenty-three dash zero-zero-nine. This is an ordinance amending the commencement time of regular meetings of the city council to six P.M. effective July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O dash two-three dash zero-zero-nine.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, clear call rule.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is, uh, the first reading of ordinance O dash twenty-three dash zero-one-zero. This is an ordinance adopting the NFPA seventy, National Electric Code, twenty-twenty-three. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance ordinance O dash two-three dash zero-one-oh to the second reading.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any, any add that Pete?
Uh, well, I will just mention that the city hasn't updated its electric codes since two thousand and seven. Or five. Way back there. So, uh, it's time to join the real world and we'll probably be updating, uh, many more of our building codes over the next couple of months, so.
Okay, very good. Clear call rule.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O dash twenty-three dash zero-one-one. This is an ordinance amending the solar net metering policy, specifically the fair solar credit determination, uh, to be approved to a second reading. This is the first reading and, uh, mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance ordinance O dash two-three dash zero-zero-one to the second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any additions?
I wonder if Jeff, or does anybody have any questions? Jeff could answer a couple of questions. Basically, if I understand this correctly, being this out of my world here, but, um, we've now, with, with, uh, some of the solar prices, the prices of energy available to consumers, it is now possible that during our winter months, um, somebody could actually generate more electricity than...
They would actually get paid more for what they generate than what we charge.
Right.
For that same kilowatt hour.
Right, so this amendment will, will, will not allow that.
Yeah.
Okay. Did I say that right Jeff?
Yeah, it's basically no more than a one-for-one. They'll say we're, we're charging eight cents, they'll get no more than eight cents.
Right. Any other questions on that?
Sounds good. Okay. Clear call rule.
Okay, councilmember Newman.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is resolution R dash twenty-three dash O-one-two. This is a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Bureau Fire Protection District. Um, mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve resolution R dash two-three dash zero-one-two.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Um, Pete, so my understanding, we're going to have two of these. We had for Bureau as well as Wyonet, so these are mutual aid agreements, so when we get in a tough spot, both Bureau and Wyonet come to help us with our fires and then we in turn go help them as well.
That is correct. That is basically just the whole thing.
Very good. Okay. Um, no discussion, seeing no discussion, clear call rule.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next is resolution R dash twenty-three dash zero-one-three. This is a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Wyonet Fire Protection District and Mayor Mabry, all council members have, uh, reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve resolution R dash two-three dash zero-one-three.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion concerning this resolution? Seeing none, clear call rule.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is resolution R dash twenty-three dash zero-one-four. This is a resolution accepting the low bid and awarding a contract to Advance Asphalt for the MFT-funded portion of our road projects, uh, which I think is in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars even. Uh, mayor, all, uh, all council members have reviewed this, uh, resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve resolution R dash two-three dash zero-one-four.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Teresa, do you want to mention anything about the differential between the engineering investment and...
Well, it, it, we're pleased to say that they actually came in a little bit lower, so, um, it's always, and for the MFT and then when we talk about the general fund as well, next, uh, that's a good, good direction to see on the projects and also gives us a little bit of a little focus on what can always is going to come up, so, um, we're very pleased with the best this year, so.
Okay, clear call rule.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is resolution R dash twenty-three dash O-one-five. This is a resolution accepting the low bid and awarding a contract to Advance Asphalt for the general fund portion of the road projects totaling three-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve resolution R dash two-three dash zero-one-five.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If I could, Teresa, now I know that, uh, we have Advanced Asphalt doing the overlays and then Advanced Asphalt is going to be doing some ADA work on some sidewalks and the way I read that bid, that's in there.
Uh, well, one of the goals this year, uh, and going forward, to reevaluate, as the mayor mentioned, to see all of the handicap accessible ramps going into the roads, to make sure those are updated as we're updating the streets. So, going forward, the, the quotes that we will have, um, for, most likely for your general fund for sure, MFT will see how that goes, but, um, it will also include some of those ramps, so we want to make sure we're tackling those just as we're doing the streets as well, so.
Great. And in practical terms, uh, for example, Teresa and I and the engineers from Chamblin, as well as the streets superintendent firm, we did a walkabout about, oh, six weeks ago and we toured places like in front of the Clark House, in front of, uh, the Meadows Retail Store, uh, that intersection has got four, uh, areas that are not ADA compliant right now, and then we also, uh, went down and looked in front of Neil and Shorties and, uh, the Courthouse area, Four Seasons, that intersection, and then the next intersection to the south. So it's all very worthy programs of being able to, uh, cut those areas out, put in ADA accessible ramps and make our downtown more pedestrian friendly with the idea that come next year, uh, I got supposed to be redoing that intersection of Prue and Main, that, that area is pretty blemished, it needs a lot of help, and when they do their area, then we will go, come in and do an overlay then from Prue Street going south to proximity to Courthouse. So it's a, it's a two-year project, but a very worthy project, so I appreciate Teresa's help on that to make sure that we do it in a certain order, uh, so we're heading the right direction, so, very good. Uh, we'll go ahead now and have clear call rule.
Okay, councilmember Newman.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye. Okay, we'll go now to the city management report.
First item on here is acknowledging the receipt of the ARCA funds from the Bureau County. Um, you'll see in your packet, it, it's a basic form that we need to, um, send off to the county that we have within our minutes, that it included knowledge that we received the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, um, ARCA funds to be used towards our depot parking lot project. That can't happen soon enough, so, uh, we just need to acknowledge that we have it, so Pete, you have to give them minutes and we'll get that signed and sent off, so.
Teresa, will, I'm sorry, will we, will we proceed with doing, with spending that money on the before or are we waiting for other funds to come?
The only funds right now that I'm waiting for and it's going through the process right now of the state because they're asking for some certification whether we needed the funds upfront or not, and we, we do not, um, and it's going to be CO capital funds, so, once that gets released, um, we need to make up a difference for what the project will be, so, the big pieces will be replaced, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, next item on here is an amendment to the agreement between the city of Princeton and MTCO Communications for use of city fiber optic network. Uh, it's, it's a very basic, um, amendment to that, if you look at the original resolution, which was R eighteen zero-four-one, um, it actually talks that we have six, correct me if I'm wrong here, Joe, six pairs, no, three pairs now. Uh, all we're really doing is amending this so that MTCO can have one more pair, so we have a total of eight. Each pair, um, is a total of four twenty-five per pair per month, so basically it's just adding some revenue to, to what we're already collecting. Um, this one is going from, one pair from the top, the point of presence, that, I forgot the accent right, uh, point of presence at the police station to the in-ground vault at Fairgrounds Road and West Prue Street, so. Anything else to that? This will be basic, straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll just, we'll have you, I see the phone's up from the council.
Yeah.
If he's okay with that.
Good.
Okay. So we'll get that signed and sent back off. Um, next item, holiday garbage recycling schedule. Due to the upcoming Independence Day, holiday garbage and recycling routes will be as follows. Tuesday, Tuesday, July fourth routes will be picked up on Wednesday, July fifth. Today's routes were picked up as usual. Please let your garbage and recycling out by five A.M. If you have any questions, please contact the street department. So basically, it's just Tuesdays route will be picked up with Wednesdays, Wednesdays is normal, Thursday's normal, Friday's normal, so. Uh, last thing, uh, just so everybody's fully aware, because there was, I think there was some confusion for a little while, but now that we've gotten some additional rain, uh, fireworks are on for tomorrow night, um, so we appreciate the park districts, uh, working with, um, the fire department here and making sure we're all square on what needs to happen, so go out and enjoy them tomorrow. Should be great, especially now that we've got some more rain.
Okay, thank you Teresa, I appreciate that report. Now we're going to go to the mayor's report and I'm going to step down here in the audience for just a moment. We're good. Okay, so a little different format tonight, we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation this evening for the mayor's report and under Positively Princeton, we have, uh, really excited, we've got two great speakers that are going to speak, uh, under the Bureau County Historical Society. So representing the Bureau County Historical Society this evening is Lex Poppins, he's the executive director, and representing the board president is Jim Dunn. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to these two gentlemen to give us a, a report about the Bureau County Historical Society. Glad to have you. You've worked right out of here. And I'll run the light switch when you're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity, whoops, I did the lights set up here. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. At Mayor Mabry's invitation, uh, I'm going to repeat the address I made at last night's amazing Princeton Community Fan, um, Independence Day concert that was held at Soldiers and Sailors' Park here in Princeton. Uh, I just have to say those musicians and vocalists are just so talented, just amazing. My hat's off to them. The Bureau County Historical Society is all about telling stories about our area's history. One story we've uncovered in recent months is that of C. Wayland Brooks. He was born north of Wyonet in eighteen ninety-seven and went on to become a war hero and nationally-known political figure. There are aspects of his life that are truly inspirational, as there are in the lives of many other men and women who once lived and worked and laughed and loved in the communities we occupy today. We encourage you to enter our museum doors and be inspired by the stories that we have to tell. Now to set the stage for my talk. Imagine you're in Soldiers and Sailors' Park. Uh, the audience over here will have to pretend you're sitting in lawn chairs. City council members, could you pretend that you're the band? Uh, Mayor Mabry, maybe you're the band conductor.
Very good, thank you.
All right, are we all ready? Here goes. What a crowd, it's great to have everyone here this evening and what fine music. We're doing just what founding father John Adams called for, celebrating Independence Day and our freedom with pop, shows, bells and trumpets and clarinets and drums too. American independence never would have been won without the sacrifices made by brave patriot soldiers and sailors. During our Fourth of July celebrations, let us remember those sacrifices. A Bureau County native who was a bona fide World War One hero called on his fellow citizens to never forget those who died for their country. C. Wayland Brooks, who later was elected to the U.S. Senate, once said, "Remember them and let that memory urge you on to be better Americans." Be better Americans? What was he talking about? Don't we obey the laws? Don't we pay our taxes? Don't we salute the, the red, white and blue? Well, yes, but in other areas, there is room for improvement. That self-government thing the founding fathers went on to implement? A constitutional republic? How's that going, huh? Some people seem to think democracy is a spectator sport. They don't keep an eye on their government? Close my place. They don't put themselves forth as candidates for elected boards and councils? Heck, they rarely vote. In the past year, Bureau County has had three elections. June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, November eighth, twenty twenty-two, and April fourth, twenty twenty-three. What was the voter turnout? Sixteen percent, fifty-four percent and fifteen percent respectively. In raw numbers, nineteen thousand five hundred, ten thousand seven hundred and twenty thousand Bureau County registered voters stayed away from the polls on these election days. What's going on here? Are people tired of voting? Are they therefore tired of democracy? Come on, we can do better. On this two-hundred-and-forty-seventh anniversary of our nation's birth, let's do more than just eat barbecued food, go to festivals and watch fireworks. Let's remember who made all of this possible. Let's resolve to increase our active participation in the governmental process they fought to defend. Let's resolve to be part of the solution. Let's resolve to be better Americans. Thank you.
Senator, devotion, sacrifice, our freedom is their legacy. Many as national military, I should say, honor their legacy by visiting the museums and historical societies of Bureau County. Visit the Historic Sites page at BureauHistory.org for a location near you. Explore your history today, sponsored by the Bureau County Historical Society.
Mayor Mabry, uh, council members, Teresa, Pete, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come present to the city today. Just want to give you kind of an update of what's going on at the museums. As you just noted, we had our veterans exhibit which opened in May, uh, and we have reopened on July first. For the first month, we had over one hundred people per week at the museums or at some of our events. That's a total of four hundred and forty-nine people in the door in one month. That's significant based on the numbers that I know. The exhibit was moved from the second floor of the Clark Norris House, which is the main house of the museum campus, the original house. Um, and although we went from three rooms to five rooms, it's only seventy-five percent of the total number of artifacts that we have in our collection. Forty percent of the exhibit artifacts were never before seen or presented to the public to see. Um, one of the stories that we love to talk about is one of the soldiers that was on that video, the last name Gutschall from Tiscua. Um, many museum patrons have come to see their grandfather or father's uniforms for the first time. The Gutschalls brought their grandchildren to hear their great-grandfather's audio recording of his experience in World War Two. We also have a couple of hundred letters from our veterans that were collected by a group called the Mothers of World War Two. We didn't know we had them, now we know, and it will soon be up on our website for people to see. One individual traveled from Florida to see his relatives' World War One artifacts and he also connected with a cousin here that he'd never met. We're currently looking for the proper boxes and paper to store the uniforms we have. We have over a hundred and sixty uniforms, either complete or apart, um, and although the exhibit hasn't quite paid for itself yet, we believe extending the run period to the end of the year will accomplish that goal. We have set September twenty-second as a tentative date to unveil a new Civil War monument in front of the Sash Stalter Madison Building, and we will confirm that date in a couple of weeks. In the past year that I've been on board, the board has directed me to embrace the entire county. Uh, that is our name after all. The veterans exhibit represented nearly every town in Bureau County. We've been working collaboratively, collaboratively with veterans groups, um, particularly here and, uh, Napont City really stepped up to help us collect, uh, information about our veterans that have passed on. Um, and also, we've already started setting out plans to work with other museums in the county, both to send traffic there and to bring traffic to Princeton. One of the things that I did nearly six months ago was to create a video for, uh, our submission to the county for American Rescue Plan Act monies. Um, what you're about to see is, the theme is "Did You Know?", and it will be our underlying theme for the coming years because we keep finding cool things about Bureau County and Princeton, Illinois. So what I'd like to do is play the next video and close with that.
Did you know in north central Illinois, there are places you can discover where people found a path to freedom, touching a Civil War cannon and imagining its thunder? Did you know you can still hear the sound of the bareback? Discover where disaster led to change? All this in Borah and Bureau County, Illinois. Come experience your history today, sponsored by the Bureau County Historical Society.
This video was, um, sorry, stop it. Um, this video was, uh, put out through the social media channels that we have. Um, it was prepared for a tape, uh, run on television. That may still happen, but, uh, part of our ARCA grant was to prepare six videos over the coming years using museums in the county as part of a tourism package. Anyway, I'm having a blast. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Lex, and Jim, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead now and we're going to go to any old business? Any old business? Any new business?
Um, I did want to bring, uh, something to be of, attention to the city again. I think it's been, that we've talked about it, uh, once already, but, uh, I went to the Habitat for Humanity meeting, um, on the twenty-eighth. It was a great introduction to this, this, uh, organization and, uh, we are, um, distinguished this year to be able to provide the lot for whoever is the person or family that is accepted for this, uh, this home. And, uh, so what the committee is doing right now and they're, we're reading more regularly than just, uh, once a month. We, we're on a faster route in that they're, uh, starting to accept applications from families that, uh, for this home, starting now and, uh, up to the eighteenth of August, so it's a small window for families to apply. Um, I did bring some of the flyers that they, uh, provide, uh, so that you have a point of contact. Uh, there's also, uh, you, you use myself or the mayor for point of contacts for anybody that knows of a family that may qualify, and once you make one phone call, uh, the application process can start. And although the, the application can be a little lengthy, it's, it's very appropriate and, uh, they, they stress that, that they don't want it to be a handout. It's really not a handout, it's a handup for, uh, families that want to get out of possibly the rent trap and, and be an owner, uh, come into a community, uh, you know, get back to the community as well and own the house here in Princeton. So, um, it was a great introduction of my first meeting and I, uh, just, I really enjoyed, uh, meeting the people there. Uh, they're really very kind, compassionate people that work for this, uh, organization and so, uh, just make that information available to the, and if you know anybody, uh, you can either contact me or you can possibly, uh, the number that's on this phone or the mayor, I know the mayor has, uh, been a point of contact for that as well.
Marty, it's a lot that the city owns, but we're going to donate?
Yeah, we are, it's on Cherry Street. It's, uh, I, I drove by it, you know, after the meeting just to see and it's a nice, it's a very nice lot and it can be a home for someone.
Perfect, yeah. Good.
Thank you.
Marty, you're going to keep us posted because I know, uh, you've mentioned that we will have a build opportunity, so the council members and, and any city employee would like to jump in there, they're going to be able to help, uh, nail some nails and do some building on that.
Absolutely. No problem.
We're excited about that.
Yes.
Thank you Marty. Okay, any other new business? Seeing none, we're going to go to public comment period. One more time, anybody can make a comment? Okay. We're going to wrap this up, so I do want to thank our guests tonight, uh, Jim Dunn and Lex Poppins, uh, very appropriate for, uh, the Fourth of July, uh, evening. Um, it's, the history of Princeton is so rich and that is what we've enjoyed as we've lived here, whether you've lived here for sixty years or you've been here for three years, uh, it's part of our fabric of our community, so it's exciting. We'll go ahead now and, uh, ask you, Jerry, to make a comment.
Will do. I move that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening and reconvene for our next regular council meeting on Monday, July seventeenth, six P.M., not seven, six P.M. here at city hall.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, clear call rule.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Mabry.
Aye. This means, uh, thank you for coming. This meeting's adjourned, thank you for coming.